All right, at 7:02, we will call the Lather Village Planning Commission meeting for April 16, 2024 to order. We can all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, yeah, that's me. Jim Sco- Scoosel, Scusel, Jim Scusel. Mark Tizik?
Here.
Will Forbes?
Here.
Les Stensbury?
Here.
Beau Tamaralli?
Present.
Jason Hammond?
Present.
All right. Chair, you have a corner.
Thank you very much. Does everyone have an electronic or paper copy of the agenda here?
Yes, sir.
All right. I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
I'd second.
It's been moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. We has, does everyone have a hard copy or electronic version of the minutes from the prior meeting on the 19th?
Yes, sir.
Does everyone have the opportunity to review the minutes of the prior meeting? Any changes or corrections to those minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the Planning Commission meeting for March 19, 2024.
I'll second that. It's been moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. We'll move to our public comment for items that are on the current agenda, if we have any.
On and not on the agenda. Anything that's on the agenda or not on the agenda.
Thank you.
You're looking at me and I'm waiting, like, get up your neck.
Bruce Cantor, I just, since Susie is here, I just want to, and she wasn't here last night, I just want to say that we're really sad to see you, see you leaving the city and the Planning Commission. It was awesome working with you for how many years?
Five.
Five years on Planning Commission and Council, and you will definitely be missed, and wish you good luck into the future.
Thanks, Bruce. I think I.
All right. Any other public comment regarding the agenda, on or off? We'll move on to old business and table items, which there are none. We'll move on to new business. New business item A, public hearing for the 24, 2024 to 2029 capital improvement plan.
All right. Eric's getting himself situated. We, you know, you guys saw this at our last meeting, and there was a request to put in a couple charts to more easily depict what has and is remaining to be done, particularly as it relates to the roads, sanitary, the storm, fire, gate valves, fire hydrants. And so, we've done that, and I did excellent, grab it, if I do say it still myself. On pages 30 of the packet, or page 26 of the actual CIP, we've got, we've really, we've broken it down for, you know, for the roads, for example, there's 25.8 miles of roads, right? Through, we've listed then what we've done to date in terms of what was reconstructed with, you know, brand new ag base, basylar, new pavement, what was rehabilitated, and then what did we pave in terms of gravel roads? And then we've also got what's left, what's left to be done for resurfacing and whatnot. This does not include anything that's being done on Southfield Road, okay? These are only, only city projects. So, and then we've similarly broken these down, again, for the sanitary, and then, again, over just a few pages ahead for the water, for the water section in terms of the hydrants, the meters, or the mains, I'm sorry, and the gate valves. So, that was really the, the one and only change that was requested. There's no substantive changes to the projects identified in, in this. And so, if you are ready, we can open, open the public comment, and then, once the public comment is closed, we can discuss and ask questions.
Before we open the public comment, the charts that are added to the, the charts that you added?
Yes.
Were at the request of the Commission. So, for those of us who were looking for the charts, were they, is everybody satisfied with what you saw? Is that what you're looking for?
And just to clarify also, everything that's within the charts is pulled from the text, and so, I believe the comment was initially that because the text was so extensive, it would be easy to have that information and data in table format, and so that was the purpose behind doing that. So, that information is still there within the text, and it hasn't been removed.
I was the person that kind of called that out, and I like the format, it's good. One question, a clarification, on page 27 of the document 31 in the materials, under sanitary and storm sewer, you show repairs to date under the blue bar, and it shows reconstructed, rehabilitated, paved gravel. It appears that it was a copy and paste of the road information above, as well as the dollar amounts in the, for better, lack of a better term, the light pink.
Okay.
Just making note of that, and if you can, or maybe I'm looking at an older version, I don't know if it was, fell through the crack. But yeah, I like it. It helps me really understand where we are and.
Yeah, we'll get the correct data on that and, and have that updated.
Okay. Very helpful.
Any other comments from the Commission? We will open up, excuse me. We will open up our public hearing regarding the capital improvement plan. Seeing no public comments for that, we'll close that and bring it back to the Commission to accept a motion to forward the capital improvement plan to Council.
With the fix on page 25.
Yeah, well, that's a given. But that could be in the motion, but somebody still has to make the motion. So, moved, is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved in second to forward the CIP or the 2024 to 2029 capital improvement plan with the necessary corrections to Council. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. All right. Item C.
All right.
The public hearing for proposed special land use for 2672, 26727 Southfield Road, the BP gas station.
Yes.
We'll let her start. Or let them start, I'm sorry.
You can, you have the presentation, right? So, you want to do that here? Okay.
I mean, we can do it from, yeah.
Yep.
You want to give a summary first?
Yes, so, as most of you are familiar with, our new BP gas station opened last, last spring, oh my gosh, it last spring. This was actually the very first project, just so you know, the very first project that I worked on with this board and with City Council. The day I was introduced to Council was the day I met this, these fabulous gentlemen, right? So, they're, they're here before you today requesting special land use, special land use recommendation favorable one, to allow them to sell alcohol at the gas station as part of their business ventures. So, it is a, they, they've already had their site plan, obviously. We saw them even last year for amended site plan approval for the signs. And so, this is just the specialty and juice element of it. We have Dave Draper here, who is the attorney representing them and this project, and I will let Dave, if he's ready, go ahead.
Great. I want to thank, thank the Commission for having us tonight and Council, and I want to echo the good sentiments about working with Susie Steck, who we were, we had the opportunity to work with at Jagged Fork a few years ago, and, and had a great experience with the Commission and the Council and Susie, so we'll definitely miss you here with whatever the next thing is, but I know you guys are very lucky to work with her, and she's lucky to work here, so, nice. But thank you. So, I've got Attorney Todd Russell Perkins with me, we're both working on this together and worked on a number of matters together over the last 20 years or so, and I just want to give you a brief rundown. We've got a little, this is, you know, the BP station, it's been there since last May. The partners wanted to wait a minute and just kind of get open and see what, what they wanted to do. You know, it's, they've got already and been approved for SDD and SDM liquor license at that location at 26727 Southfield Road. So, the Michigan Liquor Control Commission has already vetted the partners. There are three partners, and they've already been approved for this transfer to their, to their company at this location. We're just asking the city now to approve it. There are two different licenses there, it's a little wrinkle of the MLCC, but we've got what's called a special, specially designated merchant, that's SDM, and that's essentially known as a beer and wine license. The other license is a SDD, or specially designated distributor license, that's the liquor portion of it. So, together, you could sell beer, wine, and liquor, all to go, not for consuming on the premises, rather, that's a Class C license, and it's different, like you'd see at a bar or restaurant, okay? So, strictly for takeaway. Tarek is here with us today, he's a one-third owner in the entity. He owns, or is partner in, actually, more than 26 gas stations, three of which have liquor licenses. So, I, I was vetting all the partners, just like, what do you, what's your guy's background? And when he said he had 26 stations, and I think been a partner in 60 of them, I said, I think you know how to run a gas station. So, I didn't, I didn't need to dig too far. Sometimes I represent first-time business owners, so that is not where we're at today. Our next partner is Givante Shimami, I know Givante and his, and his dad, Sam. Givante is also a one-third owner, over 10 years' experience in the business, and has another Oakland County station, I believe in either Farmington or Farmington Hills, with a liquor license. So, this is his second, would be his second with. And then the third partner is Frank Outish, also one-third owner, over 50 years' experience in owning various businesses, Tim Horton's gas stations, various, and has owned actually a number of liquor license establishments, including liquor stores and what have you. But he also has another Oakland County station with a liquor license. We, you guys know the, the, and I had an opportunity to look at the Giffords Webster letter, I'm sure you all did as well. I think, I mean, I can breeze through these, if you, if you need me to, I'm happy to. It's a reasonable use for the location. It's in conformity with the city ordinances, as far as, you know, we've checked that out, the location and intensity and periods of operation. The nice thing is, the store's been open for almost a year now, so we're pretty well acquainted with it. It doesn't, from my investigation, there's been no problems there, looks like a nice addition to the community. Number four, the use is not inconsistent with the spirit and purpose of this ordinance, and the Giffords Webster agrees with us in that sense, that it's essentially a convenience store at a gas station, which is now becoming the norm. People don't typically just open a gas station, as you see, there's all kinds of combinations, and this would be the same. Uses and character on adverse effects and neighbors, it doesn't appear that this would change the effect on the neighborhood, really, as it already is, you know, you've got now food and beverages being sold, you'll just have alcoholic beverages also sold for takeout. It must not diminish the fair market value of the neighboring lands, we believe that it will only increase, as there aren't many stores like this in, in around, well, within Lather Village. Now, the site design has already been approved, it's not going to change, other than a very small, my understanding is that it'll just change having some coolers, you know, that might now have non-alcoholic product, it will just have beer and wine. And MLCC will come out, do a final inspection, they're very serious about the alcohol being in a spot that's locked, you know, at night, or when, when the store is closed, or if it's not in use, and under, not by, right by the front door or anything, but rather, tends to be back off in, in a safer space, so that nobody wants to come in and grab it. And now, the, I know a tricky part is the demonstrated need or quantifiable need for this. So, I did some research, the MLCC looks at the population and grants liquor licenses for that, on that, based on that basis. So, of course, Southfield has more than Lather Village, Detroit has more again, and little cities have less allowed licenses. Lather Village is approved for two SDD licenses, this already is noted to be one of the two, and so, it would fit that need. Now, with SDM licenses, and those are the beer and wine licenses, it's approved for five, and only one has been issued, so, and that's, that's this store. So, what I'm indicating is there is a, according to MLCC, there is a community need or desire for this product. We don't have in Lather Village that many stores. There are some other Class Cs where it's, you know, for on-premises consumption, but this is somewhat unusual. I noted another store, vintage, I think it's Vintage Village Fine Wines. So, these would be the two that are kind of filling that need for the community, and we're happy to take questions. I've got, I have some printouts from the MLCC, I can hand them out when I'm done here, if you guys would like, and I'll note that they were approved by the MLCC, I believe, on March the 19th for this transfer. So, they're ready to, whenever, you know, whenever, any questions you have here, we'd love to get in front of Council in a month or so, and then get a final inspection from the MLCC to make sure everything's final and, and good. So, any questions? I've got Tarek Dyer here, and either Council and I are happy to answer, or, or my client.
So, you mentioned the Liquor Control Board authorizes up to five SDM licenses for the city, and what you said was that, that demonstrates a need?
Well, it's.
Like, the city actually needs five beer and liquor?
That's, that's according to the MLCC's calculations, and you run into, and this is a very mature community, you know, but some brand-new communities, you know, they haven't filled those, those quotas yet, or they, they haven't. And, look, it's, it's the term in the, in the ordinance, it's not my term, quantifiable need, whatever, whatever.
If I could say something?
Please.
I like to call it absorption of the use. The population is sustained, will sustain the use, so that it's not, like, you know, growing up in the city of Detroit, we had that, sort of that monitor, a liquor store on every corner, you know, and from my neighborhood where I grew up at, that's not going to happen here, you're going to protect that from not happening here. But, you know, it is a place that I would be proud to walk into and purchase something, and I think that's what you're looking at, how they, with the expenses that they've put into that store, and to make it nice, to make it look, and I think to increase the value of the surrounding neighborhood. But the way that, that this, this roadway runs, it, it really doesn't affect the direct neighborhood, so, and I think that's the biggest concern that I think people who live in the neighborhood would have, because this is something that, you know, this is the shopping district, or one of the shopping districts, and that is where I think that the language that we have from the MLCC is not necessarily the language that you, as a citizen of Lather Village, want to, you know, the need, you know? So, we don't need this, but it's, I believe that it is a, a use that enhances, in one way, shape, or form, the ability to have services or to have products that would be for mature audiences, if that makes sense a little.
Well, it brings up another question, like you say, in one way, shape, or form, what are those way shapes or forms?
Which was?
That enhance the community around that property?
Well, you know, it's like, I'm, I'm a little bit north of here, and, you know, when I have people over, you know, I don't want to have to drive 10 miles to have, you know, to be able to buy a nice, you know, and I don't drink personally, you know, I don't, but I like.
I'm the lawyer, I'm the partner that does.
But I always have it at my home, because I know, a lot of my friends do, and, and, you know, no one's in my house drinking to excess, but, and I like to monitor that, but I don't, you know, I like the fact that I can, you know, drive across Woodward at 16 Mile, and that gas station there has a nice, it's a really nice setup, and I envision something like that. When I visualize this, when Mr. Shimami called me, and, you know, I've been to that gas station already, I visualize that being that kind of upscale type of access to that product. So, that manner of need, perhaps, is better explanation, hopefully.
You have something you want to say?
No, I just wanted to touch base on the, the shape of form, it's the appearance of the place. I've seen liquor stores, party stores, they're like, all closed windows and signage, and it's really uncomfortable to just get in. But the way that we designed that location, and as I promised you from day one with the site plan approval we got, that we'll make it as clear as possible, light, lit place at night, so comfortable for ladies and, and family members to come in, clean as possible, and we have been, even with the restaurant put in, everybody's happy with it. And that word, as I promised as well, that we want to make sure that the neighbors are asking for it, and we want to be the convenience store for that neighborhood. And thank God we have been, and the neighbors are happy with us. I hope everything is, as I say here, that actually, I get like, when people shake their head, that it is yes. So, with knowing that from the neighbors, it encouraged us. Financially, it hurts a bit, because we have left probably half of the cooler doors empty, waiting for the products for that time of approval from the state, and thanks for you guys helping us through the state. It's a big journey to get that license approved to us. And once we have that in place, now we're in that last step here for approval, with your blessing, guys, today. And once we have that, we'll fill those walking cooler doors. Right now, it's a, it's like a default, some people, they come in, they have nothing, it's like, it's empty, and they walk out, way less than what we expected in the first year to happen, or 50% of our expectation. So, business-wise, it's hurting us a bit, and we do need it badly to compete. In the surrounding area, the city of Southfield got approved, they finally okayed the beer and wine to be sold in gas stations. I know already of three gas stations around us in the Southfield address, is that they got the beer and liquor. One of them is like a mile away from us, that's a mile in Southfield Road. So, we have to compete to survive now, keeping the business in the city of Lather Village to get you guys the revenue. So, just wanted to add a little bit.
So, I do have another question about that, because the, in the application and the memo from Giffords Webster, it basically says that liquor sales will be incidental to your gas and food sales that you currently have. But what you just said is that it's integral, you need it to compete, though it, it doesn't sound like what is in the memo and the application matches up with what you just said.
Well, if you talk generally about the business needs, I mean, if you expect to spend that much on a project, put it mainly dollars, and expect some returns, you do need every customers to come in satisfied, buying, it's their own convenience, of course. Probably the way it was mentioned, that it is, it is not the base of our business, as we're selling gasoline, and that is a draw item for us to, we're surviving as a BP gas station, along with that. So, it is an additional item to have to satisfy the neighbors, but it is, becoming business-wise, a very important item to have.
Okay.
I have a quick question. First, I think I, I agree that these are now convenience stores with gas stations.
Yes.
That's probably a better way. It's not a gas station, but a convenience store. It's more of a convenience store that has a gas station. But since you brought it up, the BP, is it BP? I think it's BP. The station right there at Woodward and across from B of A, right there where I make my turn, get to the street, before I turn on to Woodward, before I get to 16 Mile.
Yes, the BP, the mobile.
That's a mobile station?
It's a mobile station.
Is that the station that the inside, you're using as an example? Because I've been in there.
Yes. That, that's around the corner from my house.
Okay. That station, is that the concept of what it's proposed to be looking like on the inside?
Yes.
I mean, outside of just, it's coolers, but I mean, there's a, there's a presentation of the product in those stations like that now.
I, I think that that station right there is more prominent in its, in its sale of liquor and, and beer, much more prominent, you know, but it's a.
Like a smaller version, I'm using that just as a.
Right, now, this, this store here, I, I look at it as, it's an upscale.
BP.
Convenience store that sells gas.
Right.
As you said. But it, and it's along those lines, it's smaller, but I, I see it and envision it as selling that.
Still upscale.
Upscale, and, and, you know, catering to an upscale clientele of Lather Village.
Is that the intent from a design perspective?
Yes, and actually, I have another location to bring into attention. We own it, the three of us own it, the three, same partners. It's in Farmington Hills, at Northwestern Highway, and between Middle Belt and 40 Mile Road. And it's going to be similar design, like the liquor displayed behind the cashier counter, no one can reach it, it's only by service. But, but the appearance, the, the first impression coming in the station is going to be like a class.
Okay. Any other questions from Commission? That was mine. Any other question? Nope?
I just need to open the public hearing.
That was mine, was to make sure we, we're all, now we'll open the, oh, go back to my agenda here. We can open the public hearing for the proposed special land use for the, for 26727 Southfield Road. Is there anyone here from the public that would like to comment regarding the proposed special land use?
Rick Wiz, live on Lather Bullard. I'm just wondering about the description of an upscale convenience store. I've been in there a number of times, and it looks like any other gas station convenience store. You walk in, on the left side, there's, they're selling fried chicken and those products, you've got the donuts and stuff in the center, and then they've got three or four rows of candy miscellaneous soaps, goods, and, you know, whatever you want. I don't see anything upscale about it. Is it a nice store? Is it neat? Yes. One thing I did notice, though, is there are no price tags on anything on any of the items. You've got to take your item off the shelf, out of the cooler, and go to the cash register with it. So, you've got no idea what you're going to be charged until you get to the register. I thought there was a law in Michigan that anything had to be, if not individually priced, at least priced on the shelf it was on. As of earlier or late last week, that was not the case. I didn't see any price tags anywhere there. So, that's my comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else for the, for the public comment for the special land use?
I guess one of my questions is Jalen Jennings, Lather Village City Council. So, if I go in there, like, how am I going to know that there's liquor? How are you guys promoting that there's liquor in there? Am I just supposed to know now, all of a sudden? Or will there be liquor flags on Southfield Road now? Or signage for liquor? That's my question.
Would you like me to answer that?
Yes. Well, he was going to answer for you, but.
Well, I'll let him know that temporary signage is allowed by ordinance, so he could advertise temporarily. I'm pretty sure that we're reset on, on, you know, you can only have so many. I'm pretty sure that we're reset on, on, you know, you can only have so many per year. So, he would be, the property owner will be allowed to advertise using some temporary signage, none of the feather, feather flags, though, please, sir. Right, we've already had that conversation before. So, but if he's got, if Mr. Guyer has other things he would like to say about that?
Thanks for bringing that to our attention. There will be, we still have a sign, a building sign that is facing north. That, we're saving that for after our approval today, hopefully we get that, we put that liquor on top of the door. And that is, that'll be probably saying the whole message, writing is on the wall. So, we'll have that item in, in our store. For, as far as a display, as I mentioned earlier, coming in from the door, you will see the shelves behind the cashier, it's not for self-serving, it is going to be a full service at that case. For the beers, I believe, and the wine bottles, that'll be like a supermarket, it was, probably the wine bottles on the shelves on the floor, and the beers will be in the cooler doors that are empty now, half of the cooler doors are empty. So, that will be probably filled with the beer cans and bottles. The concerns from the nice neighbor in the back, we will make sure that we'll have the pricing on the shelves for every item, and thank you for bringing that to my attention as upper management. Even though if it's below or not, as it's convenience for the customers, we will have it for you.
Other concerns? If there are no other individuals for the public comment for the proposed land use, we will close the public comment section, and bring this back to council. I mean, council. For a recommendation for or not for to council, or a motion for or not for to council?
I move to propose, to forward this to council with our recommendation.
It's been moved in second, to four, I'm sorry, is there a discussion?
I think we should have a little discussion. I, my, my discussion points are reviewing the memo, getting the answers that we got to the questions that we have. We need to consider this in the context of the ordinances, not in the context of what the city council's role is, right? Which is to consider the application in the context of a lot of things that go beyond just what the planning commission's role is, which is to review and make sure that anything, any projects that happen in the city are in compliance with our ordinances, so.
Are you saying that Gifford's report is-
I'm saying that they did a fine job.
Just making sure.
Pointing out, based on the application, the review of the, the application and the site plan, that the, the, the application is, is consistent with the ordinances that are in place already. From my perspective, that's my opinion, based on what I've read and heard.
Any other discussion, we still have a motion on the table.
I'd just offer, oh-
Go ahead, go ahead.
I'll offer one comment, and, you know, times are changing, and I think in my own, this is my personal opinion, not as a commissioner, but I think you're looking forward. And I go to a gas station that sells Middle Eastern food, I love it. Who would have thought you'd buy food from a gas station? I've had the chicken from your gas station, I love it. I thought you were very forward-looking, putting in electric chargers. So, I, I applaud you for that. I think, you know, we have to have gas stations, energy supply, both for cars and people. And I think it's a, you know, you've done a nice job, keep it a nice store, have it look nice, keep it clean. I think people will appreciate it, so that's my comment, thank you.
Thank you.
I was going to follow up with Jason and just ask, was there something specific that you had a concern about?
Nope.
Before we move forward, okay?
Nope, no specific concerns, I mean, the concerns that I would, was thinking about, when I looked at the agenda, were pretty much addressed in the memo, and anything outstanding, you know, we heard in discussion.
That's what I thought as well, yeah.
No other discussion, we have a motion and a second to approve this and forward it to council. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, this motion carries, and we will forward this to council for approval.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Since we usually have the parade up there.
Let's hope we have speedy construction along Southfield Road as well.
Oh, hey, Tyra, you might as well take one of these, you're going to get one, or a couple of them. You're going to take one and give it to the store, thank you. Construction's starting, yeah.
Thank you.
I just was going to drop off the MLCC.
Yes.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thanks.
At the very bottom.
Based on population.
Yeah, so MLCC just rates coming last season, but really what they care about is these.
You eliminate it because you just buy, you sell it to yourself.
Yes, thank you.
They have to eliminate it a couple of cents.
Much higher volume, they make more money on it.
Depending, I mean, you know, depends on the bar sometimes, those places.
We have another part agenda, just so you all know. As we move to item E.
I know my notes are pretty scribbly, too. All right.
Well, I got to put the glasses back on.
So.
Item E, the planned unit development-
Yes.
Amendment for two seven, 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 Southfield Road, Panera Bread.
Yes.
Okay, so, the next item for planning commission consideration is a monument sign that you all had taken into consideration a few months ago, earlier this year. Was it last month?
It was last month.
So, you previously had taken this into consideration, but it was found that the original proposal for the, for the monument sign at the Panera was located both within the visibility triangle, shown here in green. This was what was before you, the, the last time you took this into consideration. So, the sign is in pink, the proposed sign, the dimensions being two feet by ten feet six inches, and as you can see, it complies with the ten-foot setbacks along Southfield and Sunset. However, it was encroaching into the visibility triangle, and so the commission's vote, or the commission's position was that, in order to consider the sign proposal, it must be in compliance with sign standards for, for the city. So, the sign is back before you again, upon review, just to backtrack a little bit, I don't have a pointer that I'm used to, but this is the original site plan that was approved as the PUD, and so, number nine on the- Yeah, let me see if I can, I guess I have a cursor here. So, at the corner in this area, this is where the visibility triangle is located, and this was that former sign that was there. And this is item number nine on the site plan. And so, the property line is this line here, and then the north property line is shown here. And so, as you can see, it was within the ten-foot setback. But the agreement was, within the PUD agreement, that if the sign structure remained, that Panera would be able to reuse that. And so, during construction, unfortunately, that sign structure, that masonry structure shown here, was removed. And so, it was no longer part of the agreement, because in order to reconstruct, they would need approvals to do so. So, we had asked for the dimensions of that structure, just to get a size comparison between what's proposed as the new structure and what was previously there. As you recall, the length of the new sign structure that's proposed is about ten feet six inches, so it's about three feet shorter than what was there previously. So, because this was removed, Panera is requesting for a new monument sign, approximately in the same location as, as the previous structure. So, again, this is what was before you last month. And so, the commission's position was that you'd be willing to consider it so long as it met ordinance standards, the first being that it was outside of the visibility triangle, and that the size, size standards meet the ordinance as well. And so, that's all reflected in the ordinance standards table within the review letter. So, this is what was received most currently, there was a little bit of an error reflected by the applicant showing where the twenty-five by twenty-five foot triangle is measured from. There's a small little sliver of the triangle that was dimensioned within both rights of ways. And so, by correcting that, and this is just my scaling of the drawing and dimensioning those sides, puts the, the triangle, the third, the, the third side of the triangle at this location here. So, the green area is not entirely accurate, there's actually a little bit more of the triangle on the, on the property. And so, it's found that the proposed sign is essentially right up against that visibility triangle line. And so, it is the applicant's obligation to ensure that if constructed and inspected, it should be fully without, fully on the outside of the visibility triangle. And then, the dimensions of the sign has slightly been reduced, so that it meets the ordinance standards, the, the size for height and width, as well as area, all comply with the ordinance. So, that's it in a nutshell, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer. And I can go back to the different images on the screen if, if need be.
For those of us who remember this conversation, we were pretty clear at the meeting that the last proposed sign, unfortunately, was going to go where the sign was, the monument was taken away. But we agreed that if there was going to be a new one, it had to fit. So, now that we have got the proposal where it supposedly fits, as long as the applicant understands, they're probably, you know, a couple of inches over, has that been communicated to them?
Yes, absolutely.
Everybody's agreed that it will be outside of the triangle?
Yep.
Just making sure.
Yes.
And the sign fits now?
The sign is of the dimensions of the ordinance, yes, sir.
Now, back to us, do we have any other concerns outside of making the sign fit and it being out of the triangle?
I'd also like to add, just real quick, that monument signs are not permitted within this, in the district, this zoning district. And so, the sign dimensions for monument signs was taken from, you know, the standards of other districts.
Yes.
So, that was another reason that the previous sign structure was approved within the, the PUD agreement, is because, essentially because it's, they're not permitted within the Village Center District.
Discussion?
Pretty straightforward to me.
Motion?
Yes, please, if you're right.
And there's no more discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve the amendment to the PUD for two seven, 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 Southfield Road, to include this monument sign as defined in the plans provided, with the understanding that the sign will be placed outside of the clear vision zone.
Been moved, is there a second? Been moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. So, now we'll have a sign.
They will be very happy.
Okay, as we move to item F? I'm sorry? Yeah, they were, that's true.
I, I will specify this, just because it was a, a question. This will not need to go to council, since it is-
Is part of PUD.
It, well, it is, there's a provision within the PUD standards that allows the planning commission to make modifications to that amendment, if, if these are considered minor amendments, right? So, unless the city attorney tells me otherwise.
No, this is something that we've discussed, because it was originally anticipated that there would be a monument sign there, and through no fault of their own, that was inadvertently removed in the construction process. This is a minor deviation from what was previously approved, so our, our position is that this is something that this body is, is capable of approving.
And we approve, we make the amendment to the PUD, so.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. All right.
Item F, conceptual review for two seven, 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 zero, Southfield Road.
I'm sure this is the reason you guys all came to the meeting tonight, we've all, this is something-
It was all for you.
Why, thank you, you flatter me. That's not entirely true, though. I know, I know, this has been a long-awaited, this is the property I get the most questions about. What's going on at the school? Well, I am happy to tell you that Cernow Company is here to tell you exactly what they are hoping to do with the school. We have their entire team here, it looks like, right? And this is a conceptual review only, you will not be making any decisions tonight. But they really, really want your feedback on, on their proposal, before they go full steam ahead and start submitting plans and really getting all those balls in motion. So, without further ado, who would like to come on up? Sam, please? Have a seat, my friend.
Thank you.
Tell us all about your plans, please.
We're just looking for a quick yes. Sam, Cernow, Cernow Company, thanks for having us tonight. We have been on quite a journey with this property. For the last, I'd say, I don't know how long my family has owned it, to be honest with you, but it's been a long time. And when we first came into this situation with my brother and I, the school, I think, had been vacated by the previous charter school by like a year or two. And so, it's been roughly nine years, you know, since we've been trying to figure out what to do with the property. And I can tell you that, as you guys know, there's been, you know, people coming to you guys, you know, for ideas that they've had, whether it was for a school, we've even tried donating the school, we've had nonprofits, breweries, you know, different developers come, and, you know, it kind of dawned on us that it's like, something has to happen with this property. You know, it's, it's a beautiful building, and unfortunately, it continues to decay each and every day. I do appreciate the last big weather storm that came, because it helped cleared out some of those trees, so it actually makes the building look a little bit better. But as, as you guys know, we have, you know, the strip of retail buildings across the street, and we've been in Lether Village for almost fifty years now. And my brother and I are trying to carry on our reputation that, that my dad started, and we are leaning into Lether Village. We believe in this community, we believe in the real estate, and, you know, we've, we're at the Panera, and we're just looking at the school, and it's just, it, it kind of just dawned on us where it's like, you know, we have to get, you know, plans moving on this thing. And so, you know, for the last, I'd say, year and a half, we've had multiple architects, multiple GCs, I've gone to a lot of the reputable multifamily developers. And so, I believe that we have secured an incredible team. Design House being the architect, and JB Donaldson being the general contractor. And I believe that those two companies, along with the Cernow Company, are going to have an incredible project that I think will really, you know, come to something that I think everybody will hopefully be proud of and, and last for many, many years to come. So, Donaldson and Design House are here, so, you know, JB Donaldson- So, you know, JB Donaldson has lots of multifamily experience along with Design House. Design House is, I think, in thirty different states. They've been, Peter, I think, founded the company many years ago, has been doing this for a long time. And we are, you know, blown away and we've gone to all the top firms and we've landed on, on this group. So I think Design House is here to, to kind of walk you guys through the project or unless you guys are going through it first. Is it Eric or?
Nope. We're gonna let you guys go through it.
Okay.
This is your show right now.
All right.
I'm just here to help with the computer.
Hello, I am Holly Carroll. I'm a project manager at Design House. I'm also here with Peter, sitting right behind me, who's the chief architect of our company. And I just want to thank you all for letting us present here today. And we're looking forward to getting your feedback on this project. All right, so here is the concept site plan that we are proposing. In this dashed line right here, you can see the outline of the school as it is today. We are proposing to preserve this portion right here, which is the exist, or the original portion of the building. It's the main part that you see, I guess, when you're looking at the school from head on. And then we are proposing also to add this new addition in outlines below, kind of stemming off of the school building. So for the multifamily, it would be four stories total with one hundred and sixty-six units. We're also proposing to preserve that green space in the front of the school and it will serve as a nice community space. We're proposing to put benches there as well. So as residents are walking along that road, they can sit there, rest, admire the school. And then we would also propose to do some landscaping along that Southfield corridor. And for parking, we have two hundred and sixty-seven spaces total. We are also proposing to take advantage of some street parking, which would be new. So we're proposing twenty-one on-street spaces as well as sixteen new spaces on the southern side of the building. And this, the new building that we're proposing is ten feet from the property line, which is within the master plan. All right, so here is the first and second floor plan. These are the same plans. That center portion where the existing school is would be an amenity space. The two, two-bedroom units on either side of that existing, or either side of the amenity space is within the existing school. So in total, we would have four units in the existing school building and then the rest would be an addition. And then on the third and fourth plans, we are showing the third, so that third, those two third-bedroom unit, or three-bedroom units do not continue onto the fourth floor. That's to allow us to honor the existing school as is. We were, we're trying to make that connection between the existing and new as delicate as possible. So you'll see once I get to the elevations that it's not overwhelming to the school. All right, and here is the one rendering that we propose. This is looking at it from the northwest corner of the building. And you can see the school's in the middle. We really wanted to provide a village-like feel for the new buildings. And this is from the southwest corner. And here's just a closer view. You can see in front of the school, we've got some benches set up and just that seating area where if someone's on a walk, they can just take a break and sit there. Another view that we've got. And for the existing school in this image, you can see where those two-bedroom units are that are existing. You can see kind of right here where my cursor is. And then next to that, we have a portion that is new where those three-bedroom units will be. And that, for that, we're trying to make that connection, as I said, as delicate as possible. So we're using materials that look similar to the existing school. And then here is the overall elevation showing material choices. So as I already said, we're trying to match that existing brick and limestone for the area that's directly attached to the school. And then we're also using materials like a stone veneer, a horizontal siding, some metal panelings and really trying to just honor the school where we can without overburdening it. Yes, that's all I've got.
From, I, from an ordinance perspective, you know, we're, we, we recognize that, I mean, parking, surprise, 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 parking is one consideration. There, the calculation does, does contemplate getting a waiver, right, from, from the Planning Commission and city. I think that based on our previous discussions in terms of how we can address parking, what, you know, do we want to? We've already talked with them about providing bike parking. We are gonna have a brand-new bus stop right across the street as part of that PUD. So, I mean, I think that there's valid reasons and justification to waive parking or somehow, you know, continue, obviously, that's a discussion that's gonna have to continue. But I, I think that is probably one of our, our bigger concerns is making sure that we've got sufficient, parking that matches their needs, right? And, and any needs that, that he has. One thing that I don't think I actually, I don't know if Eric and I actually mentioned it, so they, Holly did say that first floor is gonna be, the school is gonna be their amenity space, right? And so that is one thing to keep in mind as the plans officially come forward is what is, you know, multifamily is permitted use within the Village Center District. Typically, it's on the second floor and above, right? So what would be that, like, mixed element? There's flexibility within the ordinance for you to say, well, you know, we're okay with having all multifamily. But those are just some, some thoughts to keep, keep in mind. But really interested to hear your thoughts.
My first question is, so would all these units be rentals or they be sold to the families?
Frontal rentals. Yep. Market, market rate.
The, it's nice that there's brick connecting the school to the new buildings that you're gonna build, but why not continue that to make it consistent with the school building that's already there? It's beautiful. It's a brick building. It's, why wouldn't you want to accentuate that by extending the additions to include that as well?
So, great question. Figured you might ask that. Design House has gone through a number of iterations. So we, we don't want, i- if you have an all-brick facade, it starts to go away from looking like a vibrant apartment building and look more of like an institution. And what we've also done, you know, we've, we've had a lot of experts that are currently on our team go through this, look at market research. And, you know, looking at the newest projects that are in our region, I mean, and these are all in cities that have, you know, very demanding knowledgeable planning departments. We know what cities want, we know what customers want, and if we want to be able to attract customers with a diversity of ages and backgrounds, the project's going to do better. And by doing this kind of benchmarking, we're also feel like this is gonna attract other development of all kinds. I think this is gonna be key improvements for the city. Versus if you have more of a, if you have a, an entire brick-looking building, it's, it's going to be, it, it looks and feels a lot more of like a civic type of a structure. And I, and I don't think that we're going to, you know, this is a multifamily project that is incorporating the school. And so, you know, obviously, we want to highlight the school because it's a beautiful building and it's obviously a very complicated costly process to integrate it as opposed to having separate structures. But we have to find the right balance between what the school is and what the actual, you know, established-type multifamily projects that are on the cutting edge. And so I'm happy to share that. I mean, I, I didn't send this to you, Susie, but, you know, there's Beakman on Broadway and Ann Arbor. I've got, you know, all different types of pictures. Now, this one, you know, it's, we're not gonna do that. But that's why we try to honor it and, and kind of keeping this, you know, kind of town home type, village type feel we felt like that, you know, complemented the Village Center. But, you know, Town Court on Orchard Lake, if you look at this one, this is probably one of the, the more newer, you know, very, very on-point multifamily developments that are, you know, underway with Think Best Tech. So you can see, like, this is, you know, it's, it's, it's very, what we're trying to use are the materials and the, and the, you know, qualities of these that are going to, you know, be successful for the project. So hopefully that's a long-winded answer. But I like how Holly and her team, you know, were delicate about that connection, which is why we have the first side of the new, you know, building kind of be close to revenue.
Well, and I like the idea of actually purposing some of the existing building for units, right? It's a nice connection, too. But as far as like multifamily in my brain, I'm thinking about like the Ivy on Coolidge, which is, it wasn't an addition, right? They just used the existing structure that was there. The whole thing's brick. So I don't, it seemed, and it's pretty full. People like living there, so it kind of, that, that, to me, contradicts a little bit the market driver.
Yeah. No, I understand. But I mean, the Ivy is, I mean, it's a much different animal. You know, I've, I've gone through the Ivy multiple times. I'm, you know, I'd say pretty friendly with the developer there. And I think it's a great project. I think it's creative. I think the building is much different, built in a much different time and a much different animal on a much different site.
That's true.
And so, you know, this is a much, you know, it's just, it's, to me, I understand what you're saying, but we're still preserving the school and I just think it's a little less of an apples-to-apples.
Okay. Well, I mean, you got time before you come back with a formal site plan for us, so I'm not saying go back to the drawing board at any stretch or throw this all away and make the entire thing look brick. Your points are well taken.
Yeah.
But maybe focus a little bit more on like, not just preserving the existing structure, but finding ways to integrate it more so that the new structures feel more, also not historic to some degree. Like, I mean, what you just showed and you showed us your laptop, obviously, those are pretty modern-looking buildings and that would clash. This is pretty good. It's in the right direction. I think maybe you can do better.
Yeah. I mean, I think it's great. And it's, I, I appreciate what you're saying, but, you know, again, we're, this is a, you know, this is a pretty significant multifamily development and, you know, just to push, I mean, I'm just being honest and pushing back on it because, of course, welcome, welcome to being brutally honest, but, you know, we want to highlight the school as being kind of front and center. So we don't want to take away from the school by turning it into a, a building that looks like one large building. So I, I take your point, you know, to heart, but I just want to make sure that we're, you know, at least explaining to you guys where we came from.
Yeah. No, that makes sense. So to that point about the school being the, the centerpiece, so what was in the memo was the gym's gonna be turned into amenity space to be determined, but there's more inside that building than just the gym.
Yeah, of course. So, I mean, this is pre, you know, it's a pre, this is a concept meeting, but, I mean, there's gonna be, you know, workout facility, clubhouse. I think that, you know, given what's going on with work from home, there's probably gonna be some kind of like a shared, you know, like workspace that we're gonna be incorporating as part of the amenities and then some courtyards in the back and then, of course, you know, maybe outside and just the neighborhoods and I just think the setting itself is an amenity element.
Okay.
To piggyback on that, does that, is the parking actually lend itself to a concern with the amenities? I mean, we're already right up against it right now, just, and if you start adding amenities, maybe there's something public-facing or, or whatnot, we may actually wind up having this, have some reconfigurations, just given the constraints that exist because we're already over.
From a parking perspective?
Mm-hmm, from a parking perspective.
I can probably...
Yeah, go ahead.
Commissioner Fobbs, that, the amenities right now are, are intended to be private use.
That's the word I was looking for. All right. You, you were good.
In the conceptual drawings, the first floor units are just open patios on Southfield Road. Any consideration to putting up railings or something just so that people passing by don't think they can come and sit on my chair on the first floor patio?
Yeah.
Hundred percent.
Yeah, we can add the railings on there.
There'll be, there'll be patios.
Push it.
Similar to the balcony, but privatized by either a hedgerow and a fencing gate for security, you know, your concern.
Well, since we're doing more comments, one thing, because it's an adaptive reuse-ish, you may want to exemplify the school even more in the character of it. It may, if you kind of look at the frontage, it's kind of setting back, there may be something that you can do creatively, brick walls or something that kind of ties it together and that centerpiece. That may wind up, again, I think the setback might, obviously, you've got windows and you wanna, there's stuff you gotta figure out, but there may be some ways to actually exemplify the, the adaptive reuse kind of play that you're doing, would be my recommendation. I know it's countertrick, we, we actually are differ, but I, I think that that may actually work.
Are you talking about that from a marketing or...
Oh, I'm actually looking at it because this is a centerpiece, obviously, within our main strip as well. And if you have preservation of the school specifically to preserve that feel and you're gonna have a stark difference on the corners, you might want to be even more intentional about how that works. One way is to actually tie it in more, or another way is to say, we're doing this on purpose and this is why it's beautiful as it integrates. There's two different strategies, but it's something to consider.
I'll just bring this up. I don't necessarily, it's not my personal point of view, but I can understand the point that is, that previously with rental properties, recently built rental properties in the city. Some residents have been concerned that having rental tenants that are not, they'll own the properties or less dedicated to the community. And you don't need to comment on this at all. It's just a point that I've noted in the past that people have brought up and it probably will get brought up again as we go through this process with this property. I don't necessarily, like I said, I don't necessarily agree with that. I think that people who are proud to live where they live, whether they own or rent their properties, will take care of those properties, right? But as, as landlords, you know, with tenants, that's gonna be something that you guys will need to take adva, take consideration about, like, how do you make sure that you're encouraging your tenants? You can't contractually require them to do much of anything other than take care of the property, but how do you encourage them to become more involved in the community? It might be a little bit easier, actually, with this property because it's so close to the municipal park where so many of our summer and spring and fall events take place. But it's just a thing I've heard in the past and want you to take note of.
Yeah. No, it's a concern for sure. I mean, it's security, you know, I think it boils down to the sophistication of the management team that we're gonna be bringing in. So I, I think that that's gonna be a major, major role to play. And, you know, the thing that is comforting is because, you know, this is a project that our, you know, family company is undertaking and we're so close to it that I think it's going to be one that will have a lot of our attention because we're already in Lathrop, obviously, doing a lot of things. We're here every day. So that's a very, very, you know, big part of this is just making sure that we're gonna be set up for success because you're right, not everybody takes... because you're right, not everybody takes care of it and turnover is one of the largest expenses of these types of developments. And so, it's, uh, it's, you know, well, well taken.
That makes sense. And that being said, like, I mean, I think it's a great opportunity for you guys, especially with the new Panera, like trying to fill the, the other commercial properties that you have in the city. If you have like increased the number of tenants that live within walking distance of all those properties, you're likely going to get, fill those things pretty easily, right? So I think it's great. It's, it's great for you guys. It'll be great for the tenants.
Yeah, that's the hope. I mean, I don't know if the, it, it's because, I mean, Southfield Road is such a major artery, right? In between, you know, telegraph and we're, I think, you know, really what we're, what we're banking on with, with the retail across the street is just the, the help with the traffic. But when, it, it's like when you, when, you know, we've got leasing activity going on right now and a lot of these guys that are walking through it, as you guys I think know, in the next week or so, we're starting the redevelopment of the old Panera site. And it's like, what are you guys going to do with that school? I mean, it's just, it's, it's, it's certainly going to help, right? If you're bringing in a hundred, you know, six hundred persons across the street, I think it's going to be a major improvement. It's going to, I think, help hopefully everybody.
Yeah, and then those new businesses that'll pop up will also benefit the rest of the residents who are already here, so.
This is conceptual, so any other comments regarding the conceptual? What are you calling it?
It's a really good question.
And is there a monument sign?
Monument signs are not allowed in the Village Center district and this is not a PUD.
But the question is, it's a, it's a multifamily unit, so you got to have a name and you got to be able to see it.
I think there might be space on one of the new facades for a wall sign.
Illuminated?
It was just a question. I'm not trying to get an answer. It was just a question.
How, what would be the regulated or the actual amount of parking that would be normally required versus the? And I know it's all conceptual, roughly 267 that they're planning. I mean, is it way short or?
So we are proposing 1.6 spaces per unit and the ordinance is two spaces per unit.
Two.
What's the mix between twos and ones?
We have 56 one bedroom and 104 two bedrooms.
Well, the plans here, here says required parking, 1.5 spaces per unit. But the ordinance says two?
Yes.
So this is wrong?
Yeah, I mean, the required parking for the 1.5, I think it should be two. We've got 1.6. I think when we have our, we say required, I think there's a little confusion because our market research, we don't want to go below 1.5. So that really, we, we really should have said like internal required parking.
I understand.
So, yeah.
To, to make this business work, it needs to have 1.5 spaces, but the ordinance might be different than that. Yeah, I get it.
Yes.
I have a question about the back of the building. The front of the building looks, looks nice. Incorporating the comments everyone has said, but the back of the building abuts the existing green space that abuts the residential homes. Based on the drawing, this property line is going to go up since we've all seen it. It goes all the way back to basically that paved path. That's where the parking ends. Conceptually, are you all looking to have, obviously you've got a parking lot right there, so there's a wall or something. But you have a park next to it, so is it going to look more parky so that I'm not walking my dog looking at this big six foot wall? You'll have trees so he, so you can still step on it. Or is it going to be industrial looking with, it's the brick wall to separate us from this park that's going to have to get adjusted in the process?
No, we'll have a landscape screen wall that will be separating that parking lot from the park.
Will the, because they are technically residents of Lathrop Village and this property, this, uh, this development abuts Jason's dog park. Is there a way to try to allow them to have access? Because obviously if you've closed off the entire property, is there some way that? First of all, I guess the question is, is, does the, with a multifamily property allow for people to have pets? Okay, so if you got a pet, you got a dog, a puppy or a big dog, whatever a dog is, cat. Not going to take the cat to the dog park. What if you got a dog? Since you're right next to Jason's dog park, is it going to be completely enclosed so that they don't have access to that? Or will there be a way, this is conceptual, so is, maybe there's a way to allow for them to have utilization of the park behind them? And the access to the municipal park, so if they want to go to the concert, they can stay at home and walk over. Or if they have a dog, they can walk outside, walk through the parking lot and walk in Jason's new and improved dog park? Just a question. I mean, since it's right there.
I mean, when we first started looking at this, well, we've been looking at it, but I'd say like a year and a half, two years ago, whenever it was, we were trying to work with Southfield to get that, you know, to get that land. And, you know, it must have been, I don't, I think this is a conversation I had with Susie. It's like, hey, let's just, let's just integrate, let's just use the park as, it's not going to be ours, but as an amenity. I think that that's a huge feature of this project. And so I think we have every intention of trying to do exactly what you're saying. I don't know how yet, but those are all great questions.
We started with this was conceptual. So it's just, it was more of a conceptual overview, you know, if you have pets in the, in your unit and you have a dog park behind you, you might want to take them to Jason's dog park. And then there's a park back there, so, you know, this would allow for the city through some of its third-party resources to see if there's a way to, you know, make some improvements to that little area back there as well so that it all kind of ties together. You don't want to have just some green space in this brand new development right next to it. So maybe there's a way to kind of, like you said, incorporate it all together so that it looks like it's one, even though it's not all the same person. So everybody has the same use. Since there are people here from council, they know what I'm talking about. But I, you know, conceptually, I, I personally think it's, it's a nice conception of what could be done. I understand Jason's point. I thought the same thing about, the school stands out like a sore thumb because you've got these two big buildings on the side of it. But from the other standpoint, if you're trying to highlight the buildings on the side or highlight the school, it has to look that way. I guess the only question would be to Will's point is, is it possible to maybe take some of the elements from the school, maybe just a little bit of brick over here? A look, you know, how you see some of these units, some of these developments where it'll have, this little section has like a little, it's kind of hard to describe, but I, I'm sure you've seen them. And it's, it's, it's not, it's not making it all look like one, it's just using some of the same design elements. And then the other question, because the school is a historic building, are there things that cannot be done to the school modifying it so that it can also have some of the design elements of the newer buildings? I mean, it's one thing to say it's going to stay exactly the same, just basically power wash it, clean it up and make it look really nice. But is it possible that there are some of the design elements of the new buildings that can be incorporated on parts of the school, maybe just in the window section or on the eaves or something that kind of updates the school but still retains its historical? I don't know because it's historical, so I don't know if you're got a, there's some rules you have to follow with that. But it's just a question of, if you can't make everything look like the school, maybe the school can look a little bit newer but still look historical. That's what I guess I would say. It's just a question. I mean, it's a concept.
I mean, that's, that's why we want this. I mean, we want to hear your honest feedback. I mean, you know, I, I'm very close to it because we're looking at it every day, but, you know, there's definitely ways that, that we could probably do a little bit better on it. From the historic standpoint, I mean, our thought, we have to go to HTC, right? So, I mean, one of the things that we've always kind of contemplated was, you know, to make this thing work. I mean, part of who we are, we like to preserve our historic buildings because this isn't the first one that we've preserved. And in looking at that, you know, large dotted outline, I mean, the truly, we, we believe that the, the necessary part to preserve is the original, you know, 1920s building that was built, which is that light gray. So I, I'm assuming we're going to need, you know, probably new windows. It's probably going to have to replicate what was there. But I'd be interested to see what Historic District Commission wants. I mean, that for us, I think we'll do everything we can to incorporate all the feedback from everybody. I'm not sure what they're going to be comfortable or what the, you know, community is going to want us to do. I think it'd be easier to incorporate more elements of the school than newer. I don't know if I could go the other way. Not that we wouldn't, but.
I mean, because there's some parts of the school that's going to have to be updated just physically because of the age of the building. And some of those new things that just to update it, you can make them look old. I mean, I've seen enough, there are enough things we've done that we've made old stuff look old when it's new. But there is a way to make some things that are very historical and say, we can update it and it still looks like the brand new garage we put in the back, but it doesn't look like it's a brand new building. It just has maybe some of the same color. The garage color, the trim color, they match or it looks like you've kind of incorporated some elements of both, that's all. But that's a historic question.
And I am by no means an expert on the historic end of things. And I've been going through our, our HTC standards, right? Shippo does have some pretty strict standards for the treatment of historic buildings, what you can do, what you can't do. I think Sam's pretty much on point with it. There's not much, we can probably take elements from the school and apply them to other elements of the facade. HTC will have to, they're going to have to appear before HTC and justify the demolition, the demolition of the north and south wings and the, the rear, rear portion of the property, right? And, and that is, and I, when I was reading this last week, there are, they've got, they've got some standards for how those can be granted, under what conditions. They, I seem to recall reading something about like, hey, let's, actually if you're going to do additions, don't make them look identical, right? Like we don't necessarily want you to tie them all in exactly because then you're not honoring that historic nature of the building, right? But that's part of my homework for, for them is to make sure we all have a solid understanding of what they can, can't do with the HTC and make sure that we're following those processes.
What do we believe will be the next steps in the proposed timeline as relates to this overall project? Are we talking, we're trying to eventually get all this conceptual to the point where we may have a shovel in the dirt in 24, 25? Or are we trying to get this all together so that we can get it all planned, approved and, you know, through the course of '24? Or are we trying to accelerate it so that we can actually do something in '24?
We actually have a meeting next week to talk about our real solid timeline, right? We've, we've been chatting about this. Really, the, the goal is, I mean, because obviously there's steps that will need to be taken with, with HTC, with city council. Um, there are going to need, we are going to need to meet with the Downtown Development Authority. So we've, we've got some financial questions that are, you know, that we're going to present to them. So there's going to be a lot more, a lot more public meetings about this. Obviously, they're going to have to come back to you guys, right? So I think the, the overall goal is to get everything entitled and lined up for the remainder of this year, really like let's get it hopefully done by fall, by, you know, 2024, let's be broad. And, you know, I'll stop there, right?
If this is a perfect world, we can try and get everything done within the course of this year so that we can begin actually seeing something begin in the course of next year.
That would be.
In a very general sense.
Yes, 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 yes. So moving along as expeditiously as possible though, you know, thoughtfully too.
Understanding that we have new people coming on board and getting acclimated as well.
So one last point about the Historic District Commission, we just appointed, the city council appointed three new members last night. So you're going to have some new people to work with in that regard who, that may have different opinions than the people that were on the Historic District Commission previously. But I do know from my own experience, asking them about things like building material standards and things like that, that they're very knowledgeable. It's a really good resource to understand, you know, what, what they know about the history of the city and the properties that are in it. So it's definitely worthwhile to get their feedback and input. It'd be worthwhile to not just ask them for the approval, but also ask them their opinion of what you guys are planning.
It's also, I think, the last major physical place of an opportunity to set a tone in the city. I think Southfield Road, there's 100 different styles along Southfield Road. The one enduring style has been the Annie Lathrop School. And to honor just that building, I think is good, retain it. But I'm familiar with a couple of pieces of work by Robert Stern where he's taken brick buildings and made brand new buildings not look institutional but fit, you know, kind of a classic style. And I'm not saying you have to do a Robert Stern building, but there are ways to make a new build look new, but also honor more the past, which I personally would like to see. But the community as a whole, I think, should weigh in on that. I think it's great that we're finally doing something with the school, or appears to be.
Any other conceptual conversation? Turn it back over to you.
Awesome. Well, thank you guys for presenting this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we're looking to like continue this process, right? That's kind of the feedback that we're getting. And I'd say probably the biggest feedback I'd say would be to just take all of these points on, on design, park and integrating those things for the community, so.
Absolutely.
That's what we'll, we'll work on before we come back to you, so, thank you.
That's great. Thank you. Thank you all.
Are we taking public comments for their conceptual drawings at this point?
Uh, I mean, we don't necessarily, it's not on the agenda, but that, you could deviate from the agenda if you would like to take public comments.
We have two comments.
Do you have, we do have.
We have two comments from the audience here.
I think that.
No, no.
Knowing, knowing, knowing what we're here for and receiving comments, I, I would say yes, please. Yes, please.
Good evening. Ian Ferguson, Lathrop Village. So I have tremendous respect and confidence in the Surnau Company. And the reason why I'm saying that is because I've seen what they've done in Birmingham. And I welcome the commissioners to visit the old post office, which is probably their headquarters, right? There is also the old school board building.
Correct.
Is that right around the corner? And also the last one, which is the most updated building, which is behind the post office. I'm not sure what street that is, but it's pretty much, they've maintained the sense of the, the, the era of the building as well as updating the building. So I welcome you guys to do that. I have the utmost confidence that they're going to do the same thing here with the exception of the, the newer parts of our building, which we know we have to tear down. So I welcome you guys to look at that. And then when you open it up for the community, then they, you can steer them to those buildings. Because most of our residents are usually in Birmingham anyway. So I'm happy that we're actually at this point because the road for me and you has, have been very long and I'm really happy that we're actually here. So I appreciate you guys doing what you've done up until this point. And I did draw a hard line with you guys several years ago, but it was all in good confidence and faith and respect. Just wanted you to know that. Thank you. Just wanted you to know that. Thank you.
Rick Whiz, and just a quick question. I, Jason brought up something about material. I was just wondering, does the city have a requirement for how much of a resident is supposed to be brick as opposed to wood or non-brick? I mean, if you go back to the original design, I think all the first floors, first story had to be brick of some type. And anything above could be different. I was just wondering, you know, if that plays into this whole situation.
Do you want me to answer that? Yes, we have very strong, strict building materials standards. So as you know, you had, you actually formed a building materials subcommittee. I think it had one meeting and came back with a resounding, nope, we're good. And so.
We met twice.
All right. Two meetings and you still came up with the same answer of, no, thank you, we're, we're happy with our very strict standards. So, and, and that has been something that, you know, we've had conversations with Sam and his team about for all of their developments, right? And making, making sure that they are adhering to those standards, but they've also honestly provided you the impetus to kind of allow for different materials that are also that high-quality durability. And we see that reflected in, you know, in their front of a deposit south of 696. We're going to see it again across the street and, you know, even, even with Panera. So, yes, they are adhering to those building standards, materials standards.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Appreciate it. Looking forward to seeing the next concept. After you get all your input. But hopefully we can, you know, I think we would all agree, we would all like to see this move forward, you know, expeditiously.
I've learned, you know, from my limited experience, that if you rush things too quickly, you can run into mistakes. But we wouldn't be coming to you guys, you know, if we weren't serious and if I didn't feel like we had the, the right team to really put something in front of you that we can tend not to do. So, very loud and clear.
Thank you.
I'll think of a name, too.
It's going to be called the Less.
No. That's a small monument sign.
Just a monument. If you're going to call the dog park Jason's Dog Park, I think it's only fair.
We'll let our parade go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Only thing left is item number nine, other matters for discussion, A, development, project update.
You'll notice I didn't have one. That was in the packet. I was on the phone way too much today and I didn't get around to it. I will actually have, I will send you something. We have a lot of projects, actually. I mean, we, I, I have a short list on, on my board. Some of these are projects that are, you know, they're, they're new businesses that actually do not need to come before the planning commission. And they've been pulling their appropriate building permit before and after we've found them. So there's some of those. I, there are a handful of projects, actually, that are not quite ready for that list. But I know they're coming and, and so I've already got like a dozen, half a dozen of them. So, I mean, you guys are on track for a busy year, right? So I will send that out as soon as I can and get that, and get that complete, so.
All right. Under item 10, general communications, I guess we'll first say we're going to miss Suzie.
I'm going to miss you guys, too.
But we wish you well.
Thank you. Yes, I, I, I know this is probably a surprise for some of you. It may, may or may not have heard through, you know, various means. This is my last meeting. I have really enjoyed working with all of you gentlemen. It's been a fantastic pleasure. I think that we've come pretty dang far, actually, in the last five years since I've, since I've been here. I think we had like three projects the first year and it was like, okay, all right, let's see what we can do. And here we are. I mean, we have like our project, every meeting, more than one. And that's, that's so fantastic and I'm, I'm so proud, proud of everything that we've, we've accomplished and set forth. And I am, it's bittersweet, right? I, I, I wish I could see all of these projects through and, you know, keep bouncing around like the crazy squirrel that I am. And, but it is time for me to, to, you know, check out something new and move on. So thank you very much for allowing me to grow and learn with you. And I'll see you on the next, see you on the next adventure.
See you, Panera.
Yeah, see you, Panera. Or maybe Javer, it's when they open, right?
Was there anything else for general communication?
I had a couple of things. I mentioned it earlier, but just to restate it, the City Council did appoint new members to the Historic District Commission. And while the Planning Commission doesn't necessarily have a super tight, or hasn't historically had a super tight relationship with that committee, maybe this project will spawn something around that.
We're going to be working together quite a bit.
Yeah, we got a funny feeling, right? So just good information to have. And then there are events coming up in the near future that the Tree Committee and the Parks and Rec Committee are organizing. They're jointly organizing an Arbor Day event on April 27th at 11:00 a.m. at Bungalow Park. So that should be a really good event. The Tree Committee is actually doing a great job using social media and the city newsletter to get information out to residents about maintaining trees. Things like Oakland County's Discounted Tree Purchase Program and how to appropriately use mulch to protect trees without damaging them. So it's great that we have that committee doing that work to try and help us maintain and improve our tree stock in the city, which has kind of been an area, a sore point for a number of years, I think, for a number of residents. So Arbor Day event. And then the Parks and Rec Committee is hosting a trivia night on May 2nd at 6:30. And they're taking reservations for teams, I think of eight. And they have an intention to do trivia night on a monthly basis. So probably be hearing more regular updates about announcing additional future trivia nights.
Suppose I do have more business, though, of course. You all have this fabulous, fabulous wire. The Road Commission will be starting their work on Southfield Road April 29th. That's like 11 days away from home.
For some people. For some of us, they started last weekend.
I know, my, my, trust me, yes, it's, well, so this is, consider yourself like in the know because they will be mailing this tomorrow. So this will be going out. According to their schedule, they will be done in July. I know, very aggressive. They've got incentives up front to get this stuff going and they, they've got a nice big fat stick at the end to say, well, you didn't get it done by the schedule. So they will be starting at the intersection at 696. First, we will be closing westbound entrance and exit ramps. The city will be paving the two outside lanes of 11 Mile. And then the Road Commission will be working on the bridge surface, right? Road Commission will be managing that paving element for, on behalf of the city. That's approximately three weeks. Once that's finished, we'll flip to the east and close east, eastbound entrance and exit, do the same thing there. Once that intersection is completed, then we will begin paving Southfield Road. There will be no hard, low, hard, road closures on Southfield. We're just going to be doing traffic shifts outside, inside. So, consider yourself warned. It will get sloppy, slow, but.
Don't we have a, are we redoing 11 Mile as well? Is that as part of this project?
Yes, that's why we're, we're shutting the east, first the westbound entrance exits. That's when we're going to be doing our 11 Mile.
We're piggybacking.
Yes. The, the Road Commission will be, is, is managing that. And that was included in their, in their bid, actually, for paving. And then also as part of, as part of this project, actually, they will be doing the two pedestrian crossings, right? I know.
Asking for you.
Right? Hey, you're not getting one, you're not getting two, you're getting three, my friend. So those, so there will be one here in front of City Hall, one up, kind of by Wiltshire, right? One up there and then the DDA is also having one installed in, in front of DXL, right? Between Margaret and Rainbow. Those, the installation of those signals will, will likely be in probably spring 2025. There's some material delays, right? So, but those are part of the project, too. So yay for pedestrians. That's, I think, for real everything I have.
Gotcha. If there's nothing else, we entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn. Is that it?
We are adjourned.